I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, Chaska Planning Commission Meeting. Welcome, everyone. Liz, roll call, please.
Yep. Commissioner Brass.
Here.
Lacy Urbanski.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Baswa.
Here.
Austin.
Here.
And Chair Person Dalky.
Here as well. Thank you, Liz. Next is to adopt the agenda. Just for your information, I'm going to add an item. I guess we would have to call it eight dot A dot I I I I. And that's concerning the email that you guys got. And there's a couple of logistical things will have to do with that as well. So I would take a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Next, item four, the visitors' presentation. Is there anyone that has anything they want to present that's not on the agenda for today? Seeing nothing, we will move on. Item five is to approve the minutes of the May 11th Planning Commission Meeting, a rather long, arduous affair, right, Liz?
Correct.
Then add some storms in there and might have been the longest meeting ever.
Yep, that's true.
So, did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
All right. Any, well, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion on minutes? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Item six, the consent agenda. Any, anything before we approve the consent agenda?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Commissioner Olson.
First, I need to recuse myself from the six C, the Oak Creek, so continuation from that. But I also do have just a couple of questions, and it's more concerning traffic control. So at what point in time does the city designate where stop signs go in these new developments? Because obviously, there's a long thoroughfare along the railroad tracks and then into the neighborhood. What is the city's stance on stop signs in that neighborhood? I know I brought it up.
Particularly Oak Creek?
Particularly Oak Creek, but actually both the D.R. Hortons. They're going to have long thoroughfares, so what is the, what is the plan? What is the city's plan for that?
I believe our engineering and public works crew would have to go out and evaluate those intersections. And prior to that, they look at that as well to see if there is kind of those obvious signs of where stop signs need to occur. But sometimes they happen after the fact, after they're able to see kind of the traffic movements out there. So there's a couple of ways that they can take a look at that moving forward.
Okay. The other one is dealing with the sidewalks. So obviously, with the plating for specifically Oak Creek, how are the sidewalks maintained and controlled with the plating and where, who's getting who on which side of the street? How is that managed? I mean, is, if it's the city lot that's next to the sidewalk, is the city responsible for it? And then Jonathan on the other side of the street, if they're owners of that lot, is that how it goes?
Mm-hmm. Typically, whoever's the owner of the adjacent lot would maintain the sidewalk that's in front of them.
Okay. Then, right now, with that long road, it's going to have sidewalks on both sides of the street as it's planned right now. Who would have responsibility for those sidewalks?
There will be a portion that will be maintained by the homeowners along that stretch, but then the remaining would fall on the Jonathan Association, who would be the HOA of the development.
On the north side of the street?
Correct.
On the south side of the street, it would be the city, the property owners that have that.
The south side, I believe, would also be under the Jonathan Association in terms of continuity there.
Okay. Like I said, just giving clarification as to that piece of it because there's issues with the current landowner and maintaining their sidewalks. Last comment is dealing with number six E with Oak Creek, sorry, Oak Ridge. I'll be forthright with the fellow commissioners. When this came through planning as well as concept, traffic to the north for the neighbors was my big concern, both as a customer, as well as a patron, as well as a father. It was stated preliminary that we could not make a condition for the city to work with the neighbors to the north to identify a solution to their problem. At that time, it was just recommendation. We could only recommend the city to do that. Six months had passed, city hasn't done anything. It wasn't until the neighbors were informed that this was coming for consent that they were even notified or even discussed anything with the city about the traffic in front of their place and dealing with, you know, the increased traffic from Costco. I'm disappointed in the city for not using this time to be able to find the solution so that we can come to a resolution for this full project and everybody can walk away knowing that they're being taken care of. Because we, as commissioner, as the commissioners, think that final is final. Everything's been, all the i's have been dotted, all the t's have been crossed, but this is one thing that still stands open even from the concept phase. And like I said, me personally, I'm disappointed in the city staff of not actually addressing this in the last six months while Costco and the developers were coming through and fixing the concerns within their property, but not having the staff address the issues of the traffic on 41 in front of the neighbors to the north. So letting you know that.
Chair Olson.
And I'm just letting you know that I will actually, I will actually be voting no for this item on consent, specifically for the staff's inability to actually take action in the timeframe that they have. So like I said, I know it's a formality, but I just wanted to make sure that that's put on record and understand why I'm voting the way I am.
Yeah, I think what I'll do is, we'll, we'll vote on consent, we'll vote on six C separately since you're recused from that one, and then we'll, we can vote on six E as well. Nate, did you have any comment? Sounded like you.
Yeah, Commissioner Olson, can everyone hear you okay?
Yep. Yep, very good.
Okay, okay, good. I just, I just want to provide a little bit of clarification in that it's not, it's not, I don't feel accurate to say that staff has done nothing over this time. We have been working with MINDOT, and I, I completely agree, it's not resolved yet. And that is something that we are working towards. We are actively working with those property owners. But part of the challenge on this piece of road is that it is MINDOT's road, and we are needing to work through MINDOT's process to find resolution here. And so that, that's what we're doing, and that's what we have been doing. But MINDOT, you know, depending on the project and, you know, their priorities and things, you know, we can only work as quick as we can, and they've got their own agenda as well. So there's, there's a number of factors that we're trying to navigate here. And I just want, you know, understood that it's not, that staff has been sitting on their hands, not doing anything on this topic. It's not resolved. I, you know, fully acknowledge that, agree with that. And so, and I do understand the frustration with that.
All right. Thank you, Nate. Okay, for six A, B, and D, take a motion to approve consent.
I'll make a motion to approve consent for six A, B, and D.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry? Six C with Commissioner Olson abstaining. I'll take a motion to approve six C.
I'll make a motion to approve six C.
Commissioner Brass.
I'll second.
Or Urbanski. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. And six E, we decided to do, or I guess I decided that we'll take that one separately as well to get votes on, or votes in, in the minutes. I'll take a motion to approve consent, item six E.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
And second, thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nate.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We are on to the action items. Item seven, A, and this is continued from the May meeting. Recommend approval of the concept plan for Block 42 in downtown Chaska Community Asset Development Group, PC number 2022-30. Liz, you are on.
Thank you. Just going to get this loaded here. There we go. Thank you, members of the Planning Commission and Mr. Chair. We have a continuation from our May 11th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. This is for the Guardian Angels Project on Block 42 of downtown Chaska, being proposed by the Community Asset Development Group and the Carver County CDA. So the site is located above, highlighted in blue here. Again, this block is in downtown Chaska. Highway 41 is on the eastern side, a couple blocks to the east there. So this block contains a couple different entities within it, but Guardian Angels has a majority of the, the ownership out here on the block, as you can see on this aerial image. So Block 42 is composed of the former Guardian Angels School. There's a gym addition attached on the back. The convent building is also attached to the school building as well. There is one single-family home that the Guardian Angels owns as well. And then the remaining open area and playground space that was with the former school is also owned by Guardian Angels. The two exceptions here are two other residences on the block that are owned by private individuals. And then in terms of streets, when we're kind of moving around here, we have Pine Street on the eastern side, Cedar Street on the western side, Second Street West on the north side, and First Street West on the south side. So we're still at the first step in the process of the city's typical three-step process. Again, with the tabling at our May 11th meeting, this continuation is still with the same first step in the process of concept plan. So at our May 11th meeting, when this item was being reviewed, there were a number of pieces that the Planning Commission advised the applicant to work on, to bring back at their continued meeting. So one of them was parking specifically for the parking to meet the residential uses on-site and not use the on-street parking around it to support it. Also work on the overall design of the buildings, specifically with the, the new buildings that were being proposed with the apartment and townhomes. Another advisement was to further refine the gym user and the use of the gym space, and then encouragement to set up another neighborhood meeting conducted by the developer to further talk about those pieces. So the following changes have occurred since the May 11th meeting. The parking for the residential uses on-site are now being met within the overall block and not on, on-street parking. They have removed the 44-unit apartment, apartment building and the seven-unit townhome building that were flanked on the eastern side of the block. They did replace the apartment building site with three single-family lots. They also provided a little bit more information pertaining to the gym user and noted or identified three purposes that the gym space would really encompass as they're moving forward, and those included school activities, church gatherings, community activities, particularly youth sports for practices and games. They also did identify three potential end-users of the space, which could very well be one end-user, but then have the other users as tenants or people who would lease out the space. So they did identify Guardian Angels Church as one, Chaska Junior Olympic Volleyball, and Chaska Youth Basketball Association. So their initiative is to define the end-user and owner of the gym space at their, before their preliminary submittal. The developer also conducted another neighborhood meeting on Thursday, June 2nd, to provide this updated concept plan to the neighborhood. Just to give you that comparison with the, where we started with concept plan to where it is now, the original May 11th concept plan is on the left here to what's being proposed this evening on the right. So really, the biggest change is on the eastern side of the block where the seven townhome units were in the apartment building. So with those being eliminated, the southeast portion has changed to three single-family lots, and the residential that's on the northeast would remain in place. In terms of historic significance, this is just a refresher that both the school and the convent building are both historically designated within the city. So there is a priority with this plan that's coming through to preserve both those buildings. Just also want to note that the developer also conducted a neighborhood meeting on the front end of things on May 6th. So the current request, again, just to recap kind of where we are now, the concept plan request for the block would be to redevelop the school building into 22 rental apartment units while preserving the building's exterior architecture, and that's being proposed by the Carver County CDA. The plan also includes to preserve the convent building for office and storage use, also being proposed by Carver County CDA, and then utilizing the existing gym space as a community gathering space owned by either governmental entity or community nonprofit or for the users that were identified in the earlier slide. So that is yet to be fully determined and will be required to be determined before they submit for preliminary. And then the last piece is to redevelop the southeast portion of the block to three single-family lots being proposed by Community Asset Development Group. So in terms of zoning and the comprehensive plan, the overall area is zoned R2, which is our medium-density residence zoning district. The comp plan guides this area for public and semi-public use as well as medium-density residential. So with that, the comp plan is really set up as how the school use was provided there before, and now with the school use, no longer a part of that site, it will require us to take a look at the comprehensive plan guidance for this block as we're looking at the reuse of the school buildings. The comprehensive plan also refers to our downtown master plan. I'm not going to get too much into this since it's, again, another refresher from our previous meetings, but in turn, the plan is to be consistent with our downtown master plan in terms of the objectives and the initiatives that are sought out in there, one of them being to preserve the history of certain sites, which would include historic resources that are designated, which this plan is proposing to do, proposing to preserve the school and convent building. Another initiative is to enhance downtown's neighborhoods and housing options. So with the reutilization of the school building into an apartment building, it does provide another housing option within downtown Chaska and does give another productive use to the school building in hopes of providing that perpetual maintenance and preservation of the building. So the overall site is two acres in size when you include the east and west portions. There is an alleyway that dissects the middle of the block, which is pretty typical of downtown blocks in Chaska, and the alleyway connects to First Street West and Second Street West. As we get into the concept plan for the site, again, the school building, which is noted in blue here, would be that 22-unit apartment user. The parking for that is proposed to be on-site via a 20-stall parking lot adjacent, as well as 12 additional stalls off of the alleyway. All of those would be designated towards the apartment use, and that would meet the parking requirement for that user. The convent building, which is in the turquoise color, would be converted to office and storage use, also attached with Carver County CDA. As we evaluated in the initial look at, this concept plan is, as it exists today, this building refers to on-street parking in order to provide parking for the building, which is not atypical of what we see in downtown for office and retail-type users, is they do heavily rely on on-street parking. So in this instance, this would not falter away from that type of application. With the gym building, again, for the primary use of community gathering as well as recreational sports, they will fully define that moving forward. They do have 10 spaces allocated on-site to provide additional parking needs for the gym. And again, with downtown retail or office or public semi-public type uses, again, they rely heavily on on-street parking, which is existing today. And for the gym space user, it is an additive to add 10 spaces on-site. I think with the further refinement of the users or user of the space and the type of operations that will exist there and how that would work throughout the weeks in terms of people and parking, that's to be fully defined as we move into preliminary for us to provide a better grasp on the parking allocation out there. But as noted before, again, these type of users typically in the downtown area do rely on on-street parking. They'll have 10 on-site parking stalls that they'll be able to provide, and we'll be able to provide more analysis once we have more details surrounding the gym user. And then lastly, the three single-family homes on the southeast portion will all provide their own detached garages in the rear of the properties. This is a pretty typical layout that you see in downtown with the garages accessing from the alleyway there, so they will be able to provide on-site parking for their uses there. One item of note is the setbacks in the lot widths and lot sizes proposed here, which will require further analysis as they are proposing something that deviates from the current R2 zoning requirements. With the R2 already in place out there, those zoning and setbacks would apply. Further analysis would need to occur if there's deviations from that. With access into the development, it's a little bit different than what would be out there today, being that the alleyway, the alleyway would be the primary access into the site for the gym parking as well as the apartment parking on the west side there. The alleyway with the additional 10 parking stalls added to the gym use side would require the alleyway to be realigned just a little bit to the east here to provide that space for those parking stalls. So we'll further need to understand kind of how that will be maintained moving forward and how that affects the parking stalls along the sides of it and how all of that works. So something to work on towards preliminary. And then with the parking within the alleyway and adjacent residential, screening will be a big component along those parking stalls where applicable. So the apartment user is shown on this slide here, just in terms of kind of the layout. So again, they're, they're utilizing the existing building, so the initiative there is really to use the, the structure itself that exists today without having to do major exterior changes to the building. There might be some minor There might be some minor exterior work that will need to happen just in terms of meeting building codes and so forth. And we'll have to evaluate and provide the proper process when we know what those changes are. But at this time, they're proposing to keep the work inside, and then further evaluation will have to occur on what changes on the outside. And then the east side of the block, again, is single-family residential is what they're proposing. So a product in scale that's very similar to what you see out there in terms of residential today. Just getting back to parking and the code requirements. So based on all the uses on the site, it does require 90 parking stalls. They are proposing 48 to be included on the site. That does not include on-street parking. So again, the residential uses will be able to meet parking onsite, which was an advisement and condition that we placed on the original concept plan, which they are now meeting. The office and institutional uses, we'll have to still further evaluate, but based on how our code is applied in downtown for those type of uses, they are significantly reduced in terms of a parking allotment typically. But we'll want to further evaluate that moving into preliminary, specifically with the gym user as the end user and operations within that get further defined. The HPC took a look at the original concept plan and provided some feedback related to the same feedback that we provided to them into this continuation. The Parks and Recreation Commission also reviewed this in terms of whether or not the city would be interested in owning or leasing the gym space as a part of their facilities. The conclusion was that there was no interest there, just in terms of all the other priority projects that are happening within that department. That did not seem like a need for the Parks Department at that time. They also reviewed the area in terms of an overall parks search and expansion area as the west side of Highway 41 has been highlighted as an area to further search for park space or areas to expand. Block 42 was not, was looked at by them, but was not somewhere they wanted to consider for park expansion area. They prioritized more so looking at the Hickory Park, which is just south of the block itself, to look at expansion within that area. So a couple of things they'll need to work on as they're preparing for preliminary here. Being able to specify the gym building's use for preliminary, that would help in terms of the overall operations of the building and allocating appropriate parking for it. And then looking at the single-family setbacks and lot sizes that are proposed. Again, we're only at concept, so it's very conceptual and high level at this point. But looking at that a little bit further into preliminary. With the multifamily locating in the school building, there is a usable open space provision that they'll need to meet for that. So they'll need to work on that moving into preliminary. Screening of the parking from adjacent residential will also need to occur, and then further looking at the comprehensive plan guidance for this block. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to recommend approval of the concept plan for Block 42, the Guardian Angels School and Convent block, and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. The city council date that's highlighted for this item to go to, if it were to move forward this evening, is Monday, June 20th. So not the following Monday from now, but two Mondays from now. And that would also occur here in the council chambers and via Zoom. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the development team also in the room here if you have questions for them.
Thank you, Liz. Questions for Liz or Dave's group?
Not really a question, it's more of a statement, which is the, you know, obviously it's a significant change from the first pass. And since, obviously, it had to take some consideration from the parish on the direction they want to go. And Liz made the comment, and I think we've heard this many a times, which is that we're only at concept. We're only at concept. But like we've seen that what happens in concept sticks through the whole process, and they hold on, the developers hold on to, well, it got approved in concept. It got approved in the previous stage, so why isn't it now? I have to commend the work that was done because they listened. They didn't hold to the typical developer saying, this is the only answer. So I do want to say, you know, thank you for listening. I know it wasn't easy for the developer and/or the parish to make some of those decisions. But, you know, I do believe that the neighbors' voices were heard at the first meeting, and changes were made. And, you know, I have to commend that because they probably weren't easy decisions to be made because it was dealing with financials. But, thank you. Thank you for that.
All right. Anyone else? Dave, anything you want to add, or?
Yeah, I'm Dave Corney. I'm with Community Asset Development Group. When we began this project, we had three main goals. One, to work with the church so that they could be, continue to be viable in the downtown, even though they won't have a school. The second goal was preserve the buildings on the block, the school buildings, to avoid really what's happened. We've actually worked on three other schools, all of which have gotten torn down. And that wasn't a goal. And then lastly, to come up with a project that supported the economic vitality of downtown. And there was a fourth goal too, and to be economically viable. And so you're right, the economics of this was really being driven by the multifamily apartment. But it was clear that there was not support really at the staff, the neighbors, or the planning commission. I do think that's a mistake. And I said that last time. I just can't back away and I'll say it's not a good idea. Because I think those are the things that are going to make historic downtowns economically viable, is to be able to bring new people into the neighborhoods. There probably, maybe there are other locations that it can happen. But it became clear it wasn't going to happen here. As it relates to kind of the plan, I would actually suggest what we're, this plan is doing is bringing back what's there today. Because, so for example, with the convent, today, the convent is an office. And it'll continue to be an office at the same scale, same amount of space that's being used today. The gym space will be used by the church and by the community, which has been that way for, how I know, been that way since I've lived here, which is 40 years. You know, my kids went there and played basketball and played volleyball. So that kind of use is really not changing. The school is changing and is becoming a multifamily at the 22. And I'll just say, I think 22 is the maximum number of units. It may be end up being slightly less. The single-family homes, the church actually bought the property and tore our homes down in order to build the playground. So historically, we're just bringing it back to where it was. And, you know, I'm confident that we can make parking work again because basically what's been there all the time. Just point out one thing that is a change in the plan. I don't want people to miss this. If you look at the 10 parking spaces that occur on the east side of the gym, that's being created by shifting the alley. So the alley is moving over 20 feet in order to create that parking space. But we thought we should try to maximize as much as we can. So really, there will be 10 more spaces than what's historically been there for use of the gym after school hours. So we do think parking will work. We have, we do have an agreement with the CDA. They're working on their plan and their economics as we speak. And we have a letter of intent for users for the gym. So by the time we're back, we'll be able to share with you exactly who the users and owners of the gym will be. And would hope to be back in a couple of months with those plans. Does that be available for questions?
Thank you, Dave. It's clear to me you guys did a lot of work and a lot of compromise to come up with the proposals, like Travis said. I'm impressed with your work, so just want to make sure you know.
Well, again.
I know it's not what you would have hoped for, but.
But again, if I look at my goals that we set out, and they're basically in those priorities too. And one of those top goals is to preserve the buildings. Now, we're not there yet. We haven't figured out for sure that the economics of conversion to the apartment works for the school. But I do believe that the structure that's evolving with the CDA being involved, they are the perfect entity to take a historic old building and make that conversion. And their view is that these will, that they're more focused on preserving the building than quite frankly, creating housing. Even though that's their goal, in this case, it's more about preserving the building. So they'll be affordable market rate. I mean, they're going to be less than the $1,800 for a new apartment, but they're going to probably be in that range of $1,200 to $1,400 a month kind of rents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? It's not a public hearing or anything, but I'm just inviting any other comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council or council, the commission?
Well, I wasn't here last week, but read through the lengthy minutes, compared and contrasted to what was there, what was here. And I think it's a drastic change, and you don't see it much like Commissioner Olson said. And so it was actually very nice to see that they took the voices of the people and the recommendations of commission staff and altered the plan instead of trying to, you know, ultimately maximize profit, which is what you see a ton of. So I think it's a great project.
Thanks, Rob. Anyone else? Otherwise.
I'll add to that. It saves the school too, which is historic down there. Once you lose those types of things, you start to lose the culture of the community. And I'm glad we're able to save that. And I think you took care of all the major issues also. With that, I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approval of the concept plan for Guardian Angels School and Convent Buildings in Block 42, subject to the following 18 provisions or conditions.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dave. Thank you for the presentation, Liz. Next, 7B on the agenda. This is a public hearing to recommend approval of the final site and building plan and variance for Clover Ridge Apartments AV Development, PC number 2022-35. Liz, if you would?
Yes. Second here. All right. Thank you, members of the planning commission. We have a final site and building plan, final plat and variance request this evening for the Clover Ridge Apartments, being proposed by AV Development. So as noted before, we have a three-step process. We're at the third and final step of the three-step process. So again, a technical review, dotting i's and crossing t's. The site is located in the aerial above. It's just north of the Twin Cities and Western Railroad. You have Clover Ridge Drive that flank its side on the east side. Clover Ridge is to the southeast, south and east of the property. And then you have Pioneer Vista just directly north and northeast of the property. In terms of previous approvals, December of 2021 is when we saw the concept plan come forward and approved. In April of 2022, so just a couple of months ago, we saw the preliminary site plan, preliminary plat and rezoning of the property. There was one condition, a substantial condition that they needed to work on moving into final, which was to work on the overall design of the building. So the developer and his team have looked at that and have changed a couple of things on the building to address that condition. So some of those changes were providing a smaller scale through use of materials, roof lines and groupings to create townhouse-type elements on the building. Materials and elements were also changed on the facades to create the look that it's all one building as opposed to kind of two separate buildings. They also provided awnings to create horizontal elements to break up the scale of the building. And then they also included the use of a brick reminiscent of Chaska brick to bring in some of the ties of what you see in the community. So Chaska brick and some cedar accent elements that have been used on other projects within the city. So to give you a comparison, the preliminary approvals are on the left. The final design is on the right in terms of changes with the building. So on the left, you kind of see a difference in the application of colors and materials to kind of make it look like two separate buildings. They did kind of mold all of that together so that there's an equal application all throughout the building. And then the roof line has changed tremendously between the two preliminary and final approvals there, as well as some of the application of the materials to provide more of that smaller-scale type look. And then again, the Chaska brick would be kind of that primary masonry used on the building to really tie it into Chaska. In terms of the comp plan and the zoning out here, the comprehensive plan does guide this area to be high-density residential and open space. The proposal is consistent with this. With the rezoning occurring in the preliminary approval, it is now Zoned Planned Residential District Number 84. So the current request is for final site and building plan and final plat for a 119-unit market-rate apartment. They're also requesting a variance from zoning section 15.16.020F1, which is from our planned development district, PRD, development standards for the building setbacks that are laid out within that. Referring to that section of the code, there are a number of development standards that are listed within that, which pertain to building setbacks, lot coverage, floor-to-area ratio, and common open space. So they are meeting three of the four of those. The one that they're not is the building setbacks, which again is what they're requesting a variance from. So the variance request, what it boils down to or what the section is, is the building setback from all property lines that make up the site either have to be 30 feet or the height of the building, whichever is greater. In this instance, the building height is 42 feet in height, so they'd be required. be required to meet that along the entire perimeter of the twelve-acre site. They're proposing twenty feet on that eastern property line. So again, that's where they're asking for the variance. And with a variance request, we look at some of the unique characteristics of the site and what they're asking for in terms of precedence, whether it would set a bad precedence out in the area. There are two very unique wetlands that do flank the western side, which create a buffer requirement on the west side of the property. So it does push the building and the parking more easterly. They do require greater buffer requirements compared to other wetlands within the overall community. In terms of precedence and what they're asking for for twenty feet, there is precedence already within the community, one being right across the street at Pioneer Vista, which was approved for a twenty-foot setback from the property line that abuts Clover Ridge Drive. So they are requesting a similar setback, or the same setback here. And in terms of other precedents of apartment buildings within the immediate vicinity, we have Cloverfield Marketplace and the Clover Ridge Condos just to the south, and the Clover Ridge Development that are at much less setbacks than that. So the request for a twenty-foot setback from the eastern side would not, from staff's opinion, create a bad precedence. Getting into the site plan pieces of the site, the overall site itself is twelve acres in size. The square footage is noted there as well. Again, there's a wetland complex that I noted before that flanks the eastern, or I'm sorry, the western side. There are two stormwater ponds that exist out there today that will remain, that were put in place with the Clover Ridge Drive infrastructure. And then the Twin Cities and Western Railroad to the south, there also abuts the site. So the building and the site plan, again, the building is a four-story building composed of one-hundred-and-nineteen market-rate units. Access to the site will come off of Clover Ridge Drive from one primary access, which will provide access to their surface parking lot, as well as two different points of entrance into their underground parking. There's an at-grade entrance on the northern side, or the northeastern side there, and then another below-grade entrance on the south side of the building. In terms of parking, they're proposing an amount that meets the one per one, one stall per bedroom ratio. This is the landscape plan. It's a little hard to read when you bring it into PowerPoint here, but they do meet our landscape ordinance. The amenity areas, so the usable open space provision of the site for multifamily, you have to provide a certain level of usable open space. So they are providing three different areas of the site for their residents. There's an elevated outdoor patio situated under A, another patio and grilling area under B. Then they're also proposing a natural passive pedestrian walk-through within C. So that will be kind of a nice, very wooded passive trail that the residents would be able to use, which would also be able to connect into the trail on Clover Ridge Drive. So with usable open space, what our code requires, a minimum of fifteen percent of the gross site area shall be shared open space for sites that are one acre and more. The site is twelve acres in gross site acreage. And when you negate the wetland and pond areas, the apartment site with the parking and its amenities equates to three-point-two acres of that overall twelve acres. So based on the way our code is worded, the gross site area, fifteen percent of the twelve acres would require one-point-eight acres of usable open space to be met. Really, the intention of this ordinance, the reason it was created, was so that these multifamily projects would be able to provide a level of amenities for their residents that can be used on-site. And that really should be proportionate to the size of the site and the project itself. So with this being a four-story, one-hundred-and-nineteen-unit building, they are proposing forty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twelve square feet of usable open space within those three areas. From staff's interpretation, we believe the intent of the ordinance is being met. There is a proportionate amount of usable open space being provided on-site for the residents to be able to enjoy a couple different usable areas. And when you really break it down to the actual site of the apartment site, which is three-point-two acres in size, the ratio of that, which is thirty-three percent, is being used for that usable open space provision. If you look at it from kind of the grand scheme of things, in the gross site area acreage, that usable open space meets nine percent of the twelve acres. But again, based on staff's interpretation, we do believe the provision is being met with the intent. But with that, there is a variance being, or asked to be required or requested as a part of this project in order for it to hit that requirement for usable open space. So one of the conditions that we'll be requesting to add to the request this evening and motion towards city council in the next step is that they would obtain that additional variance from, for the usable open space. As we get into the design, this is more of a zoomed-in perspective of the buildings being proposed. So with the inclusion of the Chaska brick, as well as a lighter variation of the foundation, it does provide for a lighter overall building. And one that provides some elements that really tie into what's seen in the community. So just a couple different views from different sides of the site that we can refer back to. They also included a couple renderings of the building from various angles as well. And this would be looking a little bit more sky view from Clover Ridge Drive. And then this is more of a pedestrian view from the Clover Ridge Drive as well. In terms of construction access, that will come from Clover Ridge Drive directly. And then all construction traffic would be precluded from going south along Clover Ridge Drive. They would be required to go north up to Pioneer Trail, which is just up the road there. So in conclusion, we are asking you to make a motion this evening, one, to recommend approval of the final site and building plan and the final plat for Clover Ridge Apartments. And then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report, as well as adding a condition to obtain a variance on our zoning section fifteen-point-two-eight-point-one-two-zero-point-F-point-one, which is for the usable open space provision. And then also a motion to recommend approval of the variance from zoning section fifteen-point-one-six-point-zero-two-zero-point-F-point-one regarding the PRD building setbacks. This item, if it moves forward this evening, would also go to the June twentieth city council date, which is on a Monday, also within this room and via Zoom for people who would like to follow along. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the development team here as well, if you have specific questions for them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Liz, for your presentation. Before we open up the public hearing, any questions from commissioners for Liz or the developer?
Liz, I have, sorry. So you're using the precedence of Pioneer Vista as justification for granting the variance to the setback. Do you know how much of Pioneer Vista actually encroaches on that twenty feet?
Don't encroach on the twenty feet.
Or, because Pioneer Vista is two-story townhomes, right?
Correct.
So by default, that would be twenty feet setback anyway, or twenty-five if you say, you know, height-wise. So there, even if they were coming close to twenty feet off of the right-of-way, they're a two-story townhome. And based on the position of those townhomes, it would just be a corner of the townhome that would be close to Clover Ridge Drive because they're just the squares based on the location of that building. That's the reason why we would have granted, even though we didn't actually vote or provide a variance to it, because they fell within the guidelines of it, because they're a two-story townhome. You mentioned the two, the two apartment complexes that are by Clover Ridge Elementary. That's a completely different dynamic, because now it's more in the down, I'll say, the close knit of Clover Ridge. So you can't go much more than twenty-five miles an hour there because there's traffic, there's parking, you can't drive fast there. And not to mention, those were probably zoned when there weren't very many residents in the neighborhood anyway, so it was early on. So I don't think by using precedent by the three items that you had is reasonable in comparison to what we have here, which is a four-story apartment, which we've heard the concerns from the neighbors, and the developer's inability to try to adhere to the standards that are set by the height of the building that they want. I don't believe it's reasonable to grant the variance for the size of the building, because they had the opportunity to make the change. They, I mean, I think if we go back to concept, the building hasn't really changed much from concept to now. Going back to the, it wasn't brought to our attention that this was a concern or a variance would be needed until now. And now we're put in a position of making a very difficult decision on a project that could have been addressed earlier on. And it's disappointing, but unfortunately, we're dealing with developers that obviously want to maximize economicals on their projects. I'm glad you put the usable open space there and walked us through. And actually, if you could, put that slide back up. Because that's the important, probably the most important thing that we're talking about here on how big are these apartment buildings on the lots that they're on. And we've, from previous items that I've been attached to, this was the biggest sticking point, which is the buildings are too big for the size of lot that they're on. And it all comes down to interpretation. Staff has said it's the intent, it meets it, but looking at what is written in zoning ordinance is, it doesn't match, it doesn't fit. And finally, it's come to this point of actually showing the numbers and being transparent of what it is, of how deficient they are. Now, they get there close, but they're still not going to meet it, even if they change the size of their building to get within the setback ordinance. They would still probably not meet the usable space, because where they would get it, they're not going to create usable space to justify or to meet that calculation. So I just, there's enough here that just makes you question how it got to this point, that we're supposed to be dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but there's still a lot of questions and concerns in asking us to provide a variance, that the developer had the ability to adjust the size of their building to meet the standards that are required for the size and location they're in.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. I have a couple points before we open it up. I recall the variance being discussed last time, so I disagree with you on that one. And Commissioner Olson, you made the motion to approve the preliminary plan.
Yep.
Nothing's changed since then.
And, but part of the variance, part of the conditions were size. And all they did was change the optics of it. They didn't change the size. So the reason why, twofold, is I did feel slightly coerced because of your comment of saying, shouldn't I recuse myself from this topic, even though I'm not within the boundaries or the staff didn't ask me to. So I felt a little pressure from your seat on that comment. But with the condition that they were supposed to address the size, that's where I at least felt that they would address the size of the building to meet the setback, because setback was one of the statements from many of the neighbors that did attend on this building. So yes, I did submit it through with the expectation that the developer would actually change. Similar to what the first action item did, they took our recommendations, action may change. This one didn't. And now they're asking us to provide a variance so they can just continue doing what they want to do.
All right. Anyone else?
Liz, can you, so I'm looking at the numbers. What is the deficiency on the open space? What's the actual?
What's the number?
Yeah.
Not being very good at math.
Thirty thousand.
But it's close to thirty-three thousand.
Three-quarters of an acre.
Right.
And we're addressing that because of the wetlands to the west.
Correct.
As truncating the site, usable site, essentially.
For the variance.
Right.
For the wetlands, they knew that they had.
Well, the usable space variance.
Yeah. Whenever I get home, I will address that.
And then, and then for the setback, so I think it should also be addressed just to, we do, I don't know who Wade is, but we do have the ELO here or the correspondence.
Yeah.
We've seen it. Just want to make it be known that we do have this, and it's been reviewed, or at least I have reviewed it.
We'll let him, he can discuss.
Yep, yep.
He'll be up during this.
There's a lot to unpack here, but there's, so in regards to the setback of being twenty feet, so the way I am kind of like reading through this additional information and the comments, if we just arbitrarily chopped off twenty-two feet of the building, then all of a sudden, it's fine, the size of the building, everything.
It meets the ordinance.
It meets the ordinance. I mean, so, okay. I just want to understand, the major discussion point is safety, or just the fact of meeting the ordinance?
Well, again, discussing as a group, before we open up the public hearing.
Well, you should open it to the public, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I drove this, and I think the safety issue's nonexistent. There's not a, I mean, it's basically a straight road. There's a slight curve.
Right.
There's actually a major.
To me, it feels arbitrary in nature of the amount of setback. If, you know, when I look at a variance, I've gone through this a lot. It's like, you know, is it, is there a, is there a major problem here? You know, are we looking, I mean, the amount of feet that one little section of the building touches the road, I mean, it's not even the major side of the building, it's the small little wing section. So I just wanted to understand, like, what the argument was of why commission would not approve the variance outside of the ordinance. That's the whole reason of asking for the variance, because it's outside of the ordinance, and I understand that. But what's the argument for it? What's, why are you convincing me to say no? Because I want to understand. Because in my opinion, it feels.
Let's go back. I'll agree with you. Let's open up the public hearing, and then we'll.
Because to me, it feels fine.
Get the interaction.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brass. It's eight oh five. We will open up the public hearing. Keep in mind, name, address, when you come out. Keep in mind, um, your name, address, uh, when you come up, um, there's not too many people here, but if there's anybody that, uh, their thunder gets stolen, don't feel that you have to repeat yourself, because, um, we do want to keep things moving. So, uh, go ahead, uh, public hearing, whoever wants to come up first. Mr. Sorensen, go ahead, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Wade Sorensen, and you have my document just in front of you, I believe. I live at fourteen fifty-six Sophia Drive. Just, I want to address one quick thing, right, there's two variances being discussed here. Actually, only one is on the table for tonight, I believe.
Correct.
Which is the setback. The open space variance is being proposed now as a future discussion point.
Yeah, because that has to come back again, it's another public hearing.
Right.
So, there has to be, right Liz, and there has to be
Right.
Notice given, and that's why we can't discuss, or, that's why we can't address that one.
Focus on the setback. So, I want to focus on the setback issue, right? So, that's really the first page of, of my document here, which, and, and I would kind of disagree with your position, Commissioner Brass. It's not for me to convince you not to vote for it, it's for them to convince you to vote for it, right? They're asking for a variance to the, to the code, right? And my argument would be that they have not provided sufficient argument to be granted a variance. Their, their rationale has to do with the wetland on the east side, sorry, the west side of the property. The issue, the, the need for the variance, because they have a forty-two-foot tall building sitting next to a road on the west side, right? Or?
East side.
East, sorry. So, again, it's, it's a very tall building abutting a road is causing the need for the variance. The wetlands on the other side of the property are not causing the need for this variance. So, the fact that they want to keep the building as fully wide as they can possibly make it, you know, why not make it 10 feet? Why not make it five feet? I mean, what's the point of having this code if we're not going to follow it, right? And so, I would argue that they have not presented an argument that justifies bypassing the code. I mean, to me, it's not there. Fundamentally, it's an economic issue for them, right? They want to put more units there. They've already got a hundred and nineteen units, lopping off twenty-two feet. My guess, my assumption is that that would lop off, it's only three stories of units at that point, so they might lose six apartments, okay? They still have a hundred and fourteen units, give or take, so they're still at over thirty-five, thirty-six units per acre. So, they are still getting a very reasonable use out of this property. So, again, in economic consideration, per city code is not sufficient reason if you're still able to get reasonable use out of the property, which I would say they're still getting that. So, that, that's fundamentally my take, that they have not presented a fundamental argument for this variance. So, there's a little cost to us if we grant this variance, right? This tall building, you know, it is a substantial curve. I, I disagree with the statement that it's a mild curve, right? Second page of my diagram shows a blown-up state. You cannot see around where this building is going to be. Cut, and there's what, five hundred more units being built on the northern portion of Clover Ridge, right? Three hundred apartment units, eighty-five, or give or take, townhomes, and you got a hundred and six in Oak Creek. So, it's about five hundred units. That's give or take four thousand vehicles per day, according to that traffic study, right, that we've all seen. And eighty percent of those are supposed to be going up Pioneer Trail. So, all those cars, four thousand, okay, several thousand cars a day are going to be coming down this road, okay? It's not, today it's a pretty quiet street. In three years, it's going to be bustling, it's going to be very, very busy street, okay? They're going to be coming down, and there's going to be this forty-two, it's actually taller than that, because you see the entire lower level. But, say, forty-two-foot tall building. That is going to completely block the driver's view around that corner. The closer the building is to the street, the more it's blocked. The further that building gets from the street, the better the visibility. The safety improves the farther that building is setback. Without a doubt, the safety improves the further it's setback. I, I don't know how you can argue that, that it's not improved safety by moving it back. So, that's my key point. The other key point, I think Commissioner Olson mentioned it, you know, the townhomes to the north, a slight bit of it is, I think, twenty feet away. But those townhomes do not impact driver visibility whatsoever, right? They're up on the hill, not in the driver's sightline as you're going down the road or up the road. So, again, I don't think that comparison matters whatsoever. My key point here is, as a resident and as a parent in this neighborhood, and with all the new traffic that's going to be coming down this road, from a safety perspective, I think it's very important that that road not be allowed to be pushed forward. It should remain back where it's supposed to be, according to our code. There's no reason given not to enforce the code.
So, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that the safety issue is your number-one complaint, or your, your, your number-one...
Safety is my reason to say no, and also, they have provided no reason to say yes, other than economics.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with the economics, so that's not sway my decision, I don't know what their contract is.
Then what is their rationale for getting it?
So, I, we can start, I want to start by understanding your position.
Yep.
And so, you're, you're worried about the safety.
Yep.
You're worried about the safety of the road. And so, is it the sightlines that you're worried about, people driving, accidents happening, people crossing the middle lane?
Yeah, because as you, as you, if you've driven that road much.
Yeah, I used to live in the neighborhood.
I've lived there for eighteen years, right, so I've driven it once or twice.
I lived there for nine years.
So, the, you're coming down right into the neighborhood from the north, and where that building is going to sit, you're not going to be able to see what's around the corner.
So, you're worried drivers are going to cross over the middle lane, because they can't see?
No, it's just...
I'm just trying to understand, are they going to...
So, okay, is there...
Are people in the, are you worried people will be in the road?
So, yes.
Like pedestrians?
Okay, where are kids going to go in this development?
Well, hopefully not in the road, if you mean...
Is, is there a tot lot here?
Don't see a tot lot, yeah?
There's no tot lot, so...
But again, I don't think...
Where are kids, where are kids going to go? They're going to go exploring, right? They're going to be taking their bikes across the street, they're going to be exploring. There's going to be a lot of kids in this neighborhood. They're going to be going here, there, everywhere. So, there's going to be kids on bikes, walking, wherever else. And I know this one's going to have maybe not so many families, they say, um, but they do have two or three bedroom apartments, I believe, here, right? So, to say there's no families there is not quite right, there's going to be kids. And they're going to be in the street. It's a fact of life, that's, that's life in this neighborhood. So, to, to have that big building blocking the road, I think, is a major issue.
Okay, so, so I, that, that I appreciate, it's a fair point, so you're getting at the fact that you believe there will be people, children, kids in the road, and the sightlines will impede
Yes.
Drivers
Yep.
May hit somebody.
Yeah, and the other thing to think about, so, I know in the city council discussion, that's when the variance was first brought up, right? In the planning commission last, well, in April, the, the need for a variance was not discussed. I went and re-watched this video just yesterday. The variance was first discussed in the city council. But in the planning commission, and as a result, the developer has to, some of the comments were that to have the park, the, uh, sorry, the trail so close to the building was going to be an odd experience. So, the developer was going to cram a bunch more trees between the sidewalk and the building, okay? If you look at, at the landscape, there's a whole bunch more trees shoved in there now. So, in doing so, it's going to improve the walking ability, but it's actually going to cause an even bigger issue with traffic, right? So, again, more and more things are being crammed in there to limit the visibility of traffic.
I, I'd like to say that, to me, I don't see the building as being much of a, as much of an issue as all of the landscaping that's... The landscaping is going to be more of a sight visibility issue than the building is.
Yeah, well, I mean...
Whether it's twenty feet high or forty feet high.
Well, but again, it's, it's for the width, right? And I mean, this room is what, twenty-five feet wide, probably? Right, so it's, the street to the building is right here. It's not very much.
Yeah, I, I do agree with, with you on that, I mean, it's a fair point, I, but I mean, there's a lot of urban places where you drive and there's children and...
This is not urban.
This, you know, the buildings are, and it's not even right on the street, we're in urban areas, you know, or semi-urban areas. The, the curve, and it, and it isn't straight, I mean, it's straight right at that point where the building attaches, or would be, not attach, but be abutting the road there, as Trudalki said, but before that is, there's actually a curve, there's a curve in that road, you see? And so, if you, you know, if you're, I don't know if they have sightline studies, sightline studies done, but if I'm, you know, if I'm looking at a potential car, you're facing more of a southeastern direction, kind of like this. And then when you round that curve, so, you're, you're not actually, you're not actually coming at the building impeded, you're actually looking away from the building, as you would naturally, I mean, your sightline, you could, you could look that way and try to look ahead of you on the road. I mean, I, it, it's going to be tough to, even at, you know, you could call it forty feet or, you know, fifty feet, sixty feet, I mean, you could... How do you know forty's enough?
Yeah, I mean, well, what, my point is, the further back, because the further back the building is from the road, the further back it is from the road, the less chance there is of impeding the, the sightlines, right? So, the further back it is, the safer it is, is my point. You put it up right next to the road, that's, that's dangerous. You put it back twenty feet, that's better, forty feet's better, sixty feet, that's even better. But I'm not asking for sixty feet, I'm just saying, follow the code, follow the city requirements, which is forty-two feet. Again, my, my job is not to convince you not to vote for it. Their, it's their job to vote, convince you to vote for it.
I don't know if anyone's, that was a personal statement, I don't know if anyone's having to convince anybody. I think it's not that huge of an issue, and so, for me, as a commission member, I want to understand the position of why
Sure.
I wouldn't vote, I, well, I wouldn't vote for it. I think the argument is that the wetlands on the west side provide a situation to where this building, you know, is, is needing to be pushed just a little bit. And variances like this are pretty minor typically, and so I wanted to understand your viewpoint, and I, I do appreciate you sharing with the safety with children, I can see that, I understand what you're, what you're, what you're saying, so I would, it would be interesting to see if the developer has sightline studies or what their feedback is on that.
Sure.
Okay. And that's...
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, then that's, we're not, we're not discussing the open air net disposal, just the setback. Okay. Is anyone else?
So, no discussions on open space?
I mean, you can, you can talk about it, but we're not making a motion this evening on a variance for the usable space.
That's going to come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think let's, let's stick with this.
Yeah, stick with the setback, because it's coming back to us anyway, for the, for the variance, right?
I guess my last commentary again is, um, the last paragraph or two on the paper is basically, why is this coming now? This is final. To me, it's very odd that the final review is actually a brand-new variance for you guys. Wouldn't you expect that this would have come sooner? So, I would just encourage you guys to think about that. Why is a variance coming at this point? Why are actually two variances coming at this point? That would be a, a concern that I would have. It, to call it a formality, as it was mentioned in the city's paper, I think diminishes the value of what you guys provide. You guys provide a valuable service, right? You guys represent the residents. And to say it's a formality, because it's been approved prior, that, again, diminishes the value that you guys provide. Previously, you didn't know that there was supposed to be a forty-two-foot setback. So, your prior votes really don't matter, because you were, you did not have the full information that the city code says it should have been a forty-two-foot setback. You didn't have that information. So, again, I would encourage you to think about this, and don't just rubber stamp this. This is a meaningful variance, it's much more important than you realize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Come on up, sir. Give us your name and address.
Sure, my name's Josh McKinnon with Measure Group, I'm assisting the developer as their consultant. My address is one-one-three-zero Vagabond Lane in Plymouth, Minnesota. So, I just want to address a few things. I think first and foremost, you know, safety, right? So, health, safety, and welfare is certainly something we're concerned about, uh, and would take into account as we proceed with, uh, our design. I would say just kind of a little bit of background in how, uh, you know, the road curves, the way it curves, and, you know, how, how the right-of-way is set, uh, is really done based on the speed of, speed of the road. And then the right-of-way is, is some, most of the time, a standard, uh, right-of-way. But ultimately, those sight distances are also taken into account with the width of the right-of-way in mind. So, essentially, in terms of sight distances and stopping distances, engineers will essentially design the road on a curve both horizontally and vertically. So, what I guess what I'm saying is here, when we're talking about sight distances and what, whether or not this building would impact the road or, or those sight distances, we'd certainly defer to the city engineer, but we're pretty confident, uh, based on, you know, past projects and coordination with our own traffic engineers, that this building would not present any hazard over and above, over and above any other building, uh, you know, anywhere as close to the right-of-way. Certainly, uh, there are houses closer than, than twenty feet.
I was just going to pause you there, Liz, what's the setback for a house? Is it twenty feet, sixteen feet, or something, twelve feet?
It depends on what zoning district we're in.
Because let's imagine that there's, you know, height, height, if you're, if you're driving in a car, height is irrelevant, right? You're not looking up here to see a kid in the street. So, if there was a two-story house there that was twenty-eight feet tall or something, a row of homes on that street, you know, if it was a single-family residential, it would provide, it would have the same problem. And they wouldn't have, and they wouldn't have a forty-foot setback. I mean, I'm just trying to imagine, okay, if heights are relevant here, we're just being logical, and there was just single-family homes or townhomes on that street, right up, and then all the townhomes came out sixteen feet, and there's like a little front, the garages are in the back, or whatever it may be, right? You know, if they're just hypothetically in here. The heights are relevant, because you're not looking this way, you're just, you know, so that same argument will come into play, and, and they're, they're just as close, and so I just, I, I wanted to understand that.
And, and to your point, Commissioner Brass, I guess what I would say is, um, with regards to sight triangles and sight distances that's, that engineers would use to design roads, the city ordinance that would state forty-two feet versus twenty feet doesn't take into account a road design or any, any sight distances from that standpoint either. So, uh, the, the forty-two feet is irrelevant with regards to sight distance, because it's not taken into account, that didn't, that, when, when that, when that, you know, setback was done in mind, it doesn't, wasn't taken into account regardless of if this is on a, a curve or not.
No, I mean, a setback was considered in code by the city as arbitrary, based upon the height of the project that's being built. It wasn't like, well, the road was designed a specific way from a civil engineering standpoint, which I understand quite clearly. So, I think that's a fair point as well.
Correct, and then one other thing, I guess, with regards to the setback, and I'll get to the, the question that the resident had in a moment, but I think just important to recognize scale. I think it was said before, like, you know, from the street to the building, we're talking about the width of this building, and that's absolutely wrong. We're talking about the property line, the right-of-way line to the building would be this distance. It's not the street to the building, there's a, a trail and a boulevard between us and the curb line of the road. And if you wouldn't mind pulling up an aerial, I think it would help for the, the next thing I wanted to talk about just relative to, uh, the, the variance request in and of itself.
And you came in, this was in April, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I had COVID, I wasn't at that meeting, and so, um, this, this, going back to this variance popping up, was it at the meeting, commissioners, was it, or did it come out of city, city council meeting? Where did this? I wasn't here.
I didn't told it came out of the city council, but I...
No, I think it was expressly called out at city council.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wasn't at the city council meeting, and I remember...
So, that's why it's coming back now in a final...
And I'm sorry, Liz, what did you say?
Just now?
Yeah.
Yeah, it expressly was called out at city council.
Okay, so that's, so...
And that's, is that the first time it was called out?
I believe so.
Okay, got it, so that makes sense, that's why it's coming back now to us.
And I think...
You guys didn't, none of us said.
Right.
Okay.
And for clarity, I think the PRD, though, did identify a twenty-foot setback when we first came through.
Yes.
So, there's, there's kind of a gap here between a variance and what the PRD was saying. So, we're just kind of cleaning those up, and we're saying crossing i's and dotting t's, not to diminish the request by any means. But it is, you know, we're, we're trying to basically balance the PRD with the variance request itself. So, I think, you know, with regards to the need for the variance, or why we feel like a variance is appropriate, we have a twelve-acre site that essentially gets reduced to a three-point-two acre site, which we are aware of, as Mr. Olson, uh, or, excuse me, Commissioner Olson identified. So we took this opportunity, uh, when we were citing the building, uh, to try to, to take as much of the building off of Clover Ridge Drive as possible, both from a visual impact sta, uh, standpoint, uh, and, uh, also, you know, because we would, we would have much preferred to hide the parking behind the building and have that kind of more, a little bit more of a, a nicer edge along Clover Ridge Drive. It just didn't work for us that way with regards to the site design, uh, and, uh, when we were kind of doing several iterations of the site and building design, uh, specifically regarding the, the wetland setbacks and, uh, kind of coordinating with city staff, uh, on the environmental side. So we looked at this a lot of different ways. We felt the variance request is reasonable, particularly because, if you wouldn't mind, can you show just roughly where you feel the building is? Kind of up against, uh, up against Clover Ridge Drive? We feel like we're, we are so far back from where.
I'm just gonna go to a site plan, I think that would be more.
Yeah, well, it was kind of relevant there, just from a position relative to other homes.
Yeah.
In that location. We're asking for essentially sixty feet of a variance, uh, located on that building elevation, and really being forced by not only this, the building set, or the, the wetland setback, but also the need to provide a further setback off of an existing city pond. So we feel like there's a lot of constraints, which kind of pushed us in this direction, um, and kind of that's where we felt comfortable proceeding with a building that was closer, uh, to, closer than the other, the ordinance prescribed setback in that location. Now, I would say this, I know we're not talking about the open space tonight, but it is relevant in this statement, in that, you know, we are constrained, severely constrained on this site in terms of what's developable. I'd say for a three-point-two acre site, uh, from a buildable standpoint, to provide over an acre of that as usable green space, we felt really good about that. We have over a third, almost, almost a third of, not, a shade of over a third of our site is usable green space, and not only is it just a field, an open space, we're utilizing or celebrating the biggest asset on the site, which is the wetland itself. We're kind of getting people down in that area and experiencing that space, uh, and hopefully, like, it's kind of a model for how to develop in these more constrained sites, we can kind of use that as an amenity, that we, you know, have that beautiful wetland there that's been deemed unique by your consultants. So we thought, we, we thought when we, yes, it's a variance that'll be heard by this body at a later date, but it is important to recognize, like, we were thoughtful in our approach for laying this green space out, and ultimately, in that layout, and to preserve that layout as much as possible, given the wetland setback, we kind of feel like the, the building position can't really compromise, you know, and shift further west at all. So, kind of, we feel like the, the impact to the street scape itself is relatively low. The impact to adjacent relatives, residents with regards to the variance requests, we feel is low, uh, and we feel like we're providing an asset on the western side of our building that could've easily been, you know, labeled as a constraint that we would, you know, kind of delineate and leave alone. So I just feel like, we certainly want to make sure that the planning commission understands, we've heard comments, we understand, city staff has worked tremendously with us to try to, you know, amenitize this site, given that we do have these constraints. And so I guess what I'd say is, we've, we, it's, it looks, and I think your comment earlier, Commissioner Olson, is that we haven't taken any feedback, but we certainly have, we've incorporated that and tried to kind of enhance what we have to work with, uh, and we feel good about it. So I guess with that, I'd take any comments, uh, certainly appreciate the residents' questions, uh, you know, certainly, you know, I, I understand, you know, where he, he would say, hey, they need to provide some meaningful request, uh, but we think, you know, that meaning, that request is meaningful, it's, there's, there's a lot of things that are pushing us in this direction.
Josh, I have one question for you.
Sure.
Where's the tot lot?
Yeah, so great question, I knew it was coming.
Yeah.
So we, we went back, uh, we actually had a tot lot located, uh, you know, on the sou, southern portion of our site. It was near the, uh, public trail. We took that site plan to our in, uh, insurance company, and they said absolutely not, because it ends up being a kind of a de facto public space in that area. So we're still working with them on that, we're trying to get them comfortable with it, but right now, uh, we, we are not currently showing the tot lot, because I wanted to have this exact conversation with planning commission and council, kind of for what we're facing right now.
Right, um, and I'll, that's not our problem. To be honest, it's the part where it's the, that was literally one of the discussion points from us, and also probably from city council as well, too. And to try to come through, even, even without the variance, and not address the specific items that were able to check the box, is, I'll go with reckless. And, and, and I say that because you just got done saying you heard us, but then you provide a plan that doesn't address something that was actually directed for you to take care of. So it, it's, like I said, it, it's hard to be able to stomach on that one. And I will go back on to the, the dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but the open space exhibit that was put in late, I think it was Monday, um, to be able to define where the, the open space was. So, I really would like you guys to, to read it, it's the one-pager, but the description for open space C, which is the hill and the landscape and the little walking path through it, says, "This open space will consist of rooms with high concentration of, and large flat grass area. This will also have a walking trail and benches through the, the woodlands area. This open space will be used for winter recreational activities such as sledding and summer activities such as open ball field and frisbee." There's no open space there, it's all hill and trees and planting and walking path. So yet again, the.
I, I would disagree, sir. You know, there's certainly open space, uh, that exists south of the driveway that would be open for ball activities, there are.
There.
But you, sir, you're looking at the current condition and not the graded condition, and I would also argue, you know, that is, that's also something that.
It's the landscape plan that you provided. There's trees all through this area, there's no open space, so please tell me where the open space is.
Sir.
Right?
But open, open space is not necessarily open.
Open space doesn't mean I can throw a ball to you.
It's usable space.
But it, no, but in here it says, "Such as a ball field and playing frisbee and sledding." Is somebody gonna be able to sled down these hills in, with the trees, with the landscape? I, I, I say that because I, I appreciate the fact that you're hitting the, you know, the landscape and getting the calipers and, and, and what's needed there to check that box, but then to be able to, within your civil plans, to be able to say, this is what you're submitting for us to approve, and it has comments like that, it, it doesn't fit. And if anything that we've learned over the last few months is, we have to be clear on what's being presented.
Sure.
And what we're approving, and yet again, it's the, you know, I know it's the setback side of things and asking for the variance, but there's these little details that come into play of, what is it that we're approving? Because these are the documents that are gonna last for, in our case, a lifetime, because the decisions we're making now are gonna be standing for a lot longer than what we're here for. So it's making sure that the decisions we make, it's clear on the details that we're, we're approving. So those are the little, the little things that are important.
Sure.
But have seemed to be overlooked, and it, it comes back to the bigger point of why we're here for the variance, which is, what impact would it have for the developer to actually fit into the requirements of the ordinance that was there in place when, before you guys even started making a plan for the building?
So is the idea now to pay, sorry, I'm trying to interrupt, apologize, to pay park dedication fees, is that what's gonna happen here?
Yes, they'll, they'll be required to.
Right.
Yeah.
Again.
They're not gonna get park credit for anything.
I love that people are doing my tot lot work when I wasn't here. And so again, I wasn't at this last meeting, and so, um, so there was a tot lot, and it's removed, and for insurance purposes, what you're saying.
No, sir, we, uh, it was something that the planning commission and council both requested, and so we had committed that we were gonna take, go back and take a look, uh, and certainly investigate that, we've, we've certainly done that, we can keep going. Uh, I appreciate Commissioner Olson's statement that it's not her, or his problem, uh, however, you know, we're, it is our problem that we have to solve. So, uh, you know, we can continue, continue to work like that, but what I didn't want to do, to your point, is put it on a plan, then not be able to commit to it and follow through on that commitment. So, what, you know, I can appreciate the need for it, I, I get it, like, we certainly looked at this pretty in-depth, but we, at this moment, cannot get our insurance company on board, uh, with that placement. They would certainly entertain it on the western portion of our building, however, we're constrained both with hardcover and wetland setback on that side, it's more about the placement within the site.
Okay, yeah, last time we asked about the same tot lot, right, uh, just to add to that. So you said, like, you identified some space where you wanted to put that lot, lot.
Yeah.
If you can open that open space exhibit and let us know, because if you're, you have some landscaping plan already.
Yeah.
Been submitted. If, if it going to be approved by the insurance company or whatever, so is it going to come back to the variance and like those trees will be removed and whatever, the extra variance and.
Sure.
Distance, right, we just wanted to understand that.
I understand that, so certainly would never, uh, or wouldn't want to go beneath the, the landscaping requirement. We would, we would shift trees to be able to, to, uh, be consistent with the, the city's requirement regarding tree placement and replacement, for that matter. It, it was really more of a, an exercise to shift things around in order to provide, um, for that tot lot. I would just say, I would argue the same statement is true, and when we come forward with the variance for the open space, we can clarify where exactly the uses that are identified within the statement.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
That's fine, I, I certainly can do that, um, but ultimately, we do have some flexibility to shift these trees around and also adjust species in order to make this thing fit. So, you know, I'm confident that we can come up with something that works, um, both with regards to, uh, the placement of a tot lot, with, maybe it's a matter of what equipment is included, those are the type of things we have, now have to go back and have those discussions. But as of now, kind of where we currently stand, I certainly didn't want to indicate one on a plan and then not follow through. Or have it hold up certificate of occupancy and we've got a building sitting there. You know, I just, that, that is something I wasn't prepared to do.
So I, I just do wanna clarify or at least bring it up for discussion for commission, for everybody, so, I'm huge favor of tot lots, obviously, always have been parks for the kids, and, but be as it may, unfortunately, they do have the right to forego that and pay fees, right?
Well, even if they do provide a tot lot, they're not gonna get park credit for it.
Yeah.
Well, they're not gonna get, get credit at all, that's a private amenity.
Gotcha.
So unless they're providing a public.
Yeah.
Park expansion or a public park that all of the public can access, then they would get, then it would be eligible for credit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm a proponent of tot lots and places for kids, but that's actually outside the scope of kind of, we've kind of wondered of what, and the open space will be, which is gonna come back next time. Could I do, Commissioner Olson?
One idea I just wanna throw out for your consideration, um, would be, if we've done this before, a condition of final approval could be that the developer, you know, include a tot lot. And that's, that's the one thing that, uh, we've done before, and we did this on the projects off of the tracks, I think, you know, it sounds like developers taking a close look at it, um, that'd be something that, that you could do, planning commission, if that helps address the concern, would be to have a, a condition in there that they were with staff to, to determine a tot lot.
And would we do that tonight, or, because tonight's the setback issue, really, right, with the final plan? And then it's coming back with open space, so should we, should we address that with open space later, or, you know?
Tonight is, tonight is approval of the final plan along with the variance, um, for the setback, and so now would be the time for something like that, as opposed to waiting, uh, for, for that variance to come back next time. Just wanna put that up for your consideration, because it sounds like this is a, a topic of, you know, key interest to you this evening.
And while you're still there, um, why wouldn't we have tabled this for a month and bring both the variances together at the same time and talk to that, so that we're not, because my fear is that we're going to.
Feels fragmented.
We're, we're going to make a decision on the setback, but then we're gonna have another issue with the open space, because obviously, based on the math, they're deficient on that, so.
Yeah, it's coming back.
Why didn't we just table this so that we can just give them time to address those and come back with a final plan versus trying to do this in piecemeal?
Good question.
I can, I can step in a little bit on that, I think, I think what we're trying to do here is we identified that the public hearing notice, um, did not include that open space piece, including that variance in there. So, that was in, that was an administrative error on that side, um, and so, as we as staff are evaluating this project, the feedback that we heard at preliminary, um, and we did talk about the open space that was provided in that presentation, in that discussion, both with the planning commission and council, um, and, you know, that does not, that site plan has remained, remained the same for both of these, um, and at that time, um, you know, we, at least from council, like, well, it was a level of support expressed for the amenity that is being provided with the trail, and then interaction with that wetland back there, which is a, it's a class one wetland to Chaska, um, so it's barely, um, I mean, we don't have many of those, um, so that is an amenity site. We did hear positive feedback about how the developer was incorporating that, as we put it, that they provide access to the trail system that they're doing. And so, from staff's perspective, um, you know, since nothing really has changed from that front, it seemed about forward this evening and try to provide the developer with as much progress as we possibly can, continue to give them, um, you know, the assurances and the, that they need to achieve or move forward with their project, given that they're, you know, by and large, meeting what was expressed previously, and the conditions that we had at, at the preliminary phase, and then be able to make sure that we are, uh, you know, adequately and accurately on the administrative side, making everything work the way that it should, uh, with the variance that need to be in place. And so, um, you know, we do need to go through that process, do that appropriately, and then notice that and everything, make sure that that happens. But that's, that's the decision process, or the thought processing that staff is going through, and we were trying to determine how to do it for. You all have, you tabled something, uh, that's a decision you can make, um, but, you know, I, I would say that from staff, this is based on a condition that we put forth in preliminary plan, um, our, our interpretation is that the developer has made changes sufficient to meet those change, uh, those, um, conditions, and that they're in a position to have that recommendation for approval, too.
Any more questions for the developer? Thank you, thanks for your, for your input. Anyone else? No, okay, um, seeing nothing else, I will close the public hearing at eight forty-four, bring it back to the council for further discussion and, and a decision.
I have one comment, uh, to the staff, uh, city staff, so basically, we are seeing similar kind of things related to the tot lots. So we are asking the same thing at the concept plan, uh, phase, and then the preliminary phase. Like, most of the projects last few months, at least I have seen, uh, developers are saying they are looking into it, looking into it, and finally just approving the final phase of it. Probably we might need to, uh, give them some information regarding this, whatever happened with the previous projects, and, uh, these, these things are going to come up, even in city council meeting or the planning commission meeting, probably the developers will have more time to think about the tot lots and come up with some solution right before coming into the concept plan or maybe the preliminary things, probably. Kind of a guidelines we can give it to them. That way they will have more time and they can, we don't have this kind of discussion at the last minute in the final phase saying, yeah, we'll look into it, we will be working into it.
So, yeah, we, I mean, if we, if we want to, we can add it on as a condition, right?
To the, to the final.
So drawing up what Nate said in the fragmentation, having the open space versus the setback. I mean, it appears that that's the way that they would like to move it forward. So we have two options, we can vote on that setback piece in the final plat and, and add a tot lot or not if we want to. Or table the whole thing and do it together. I personally am not a procrastinator. I, I'd like to just go ahead, like, let's take the task at hand that we have and vote on our conditions or what we want to do with the setback issue. The open space can come back, it's gonna come back no matter what. So like, why just table, let's, we've already spent all that, because we're gonna go through this again. We're gonna go through the whole introduction and everything again, like, let's vote on the piece that, I, I think that's my opinion. Let's vote on the piece that we've been discussing for the last hour.
I agree with you as well, because the, as far as giving the developer direction on the building itself, you know, we already, they met in preliminary, or what we asked for in preliminary. So nothing's changed really there.
And the setback issue came out of council to here, so that's why we're the first time.
And so, and remember, all, what we're doing is making a recommendation to the council.
Right.
So I totally agree that we should.
Keep it moving.
Keep it, keep that part moving and then next month, you know, because legality wise, you know, we couldn't.
Yeah.
Sorry, do that this month.
And so I, I'm in favor of adding some sort of requirement that they put something in for, I mean, maybe it's not a whole tot lot, maybe it's a basketball hoop, maybe it's something and.
Something for recreation or for the kids.
A little something, right? I mean, I know they have a thing off the edge of the building. Hold on one second. And then, I'll say it now with regards to the open space, they'll, they'll come back and address that with us later. I do like the whole path idea with the wetland, that's, that's actually quite unique, so that's kind of nice. But I do, Commissioner Olson's saying it'd be nice for them to designate where this open field's gonna be and the sledding hill. And they're discussing this on the plan, kind of saying it's gonna be there, doesn't look like it, it'd be nice to see it. So that'd be, if the developer's hearing that later, when you come back, let's see where that's gonna be.
Sure.
Talk about it, we, we need to see where it's at. So that's kind of my thought process. And, and going back one more time on the setback, I'm not trying to convince you guys, my opinion is the setback is more ambiguous, more, it's, it's more arbitrary than it is anything else, because of the height of the building, the setback has to be this. Now, if there was a row of houses there, that same sightline problem's gonna exist, but all of a sudden magically better because it's houses. I just, I just don't feel that that's a strong argument against it. And I have two children, I have two children and I don't want them playing in the roads. I understand kids will go on the roads, hopefully nothing drastic happens, that could happen anywhere. And so I, I just, I think the setback's okay in my opinion. So I would like to vote on what we have in front of us, so we don't sit an hour and go through the whole process again on, on the setback issue again, since we've already heard it tonight.
Hi, Michelle, two hundred Oak Hill Drive, Shoreview, Minnesota. I'm, I'm the developer. Thank you for letting me speak. And I just want to say I appreciate Commissioner Brass's comment about the tot lot, because we don't know what tot lot, like, there's a lot of ways to interpret tot lot, right? We looked at it, so what swing set, is it a seesaw, is it a dirt sandbox, right? So if we can get direction from what are you looking for, is that like a basketball hoop? You know, is that considered a tot lot, right?
So I would give the staff discretion on that, something, right? I mean, again, I, I don't want to be picky, I'm not developing it, but I do know there's gonna be children there. And there's not a park, I, I used to live in this neighborhood, there's not a park very close. And so a little something for a teenager or a little kid to do. And maybe it is just a swing set and a basketball hoop or whatever you can fit, right? I think would be great to see.
Okay.
And we think.
And I trust Nate and Nate will give discretion. Yeah, I trust Nate and Nate for their discretion to.
As you guys sit down, you'll come up with something better than we can off the top of our heads.
Right, and we didn't have to do that with Pioneer Vista. So, you know, Lennar went and they, they're figuring out what it is that they need and what's, you know, obviously they have a space, but how do you fill it? But there needs to be a space that's adequate for whatever it is. But it needs to be more than just a little corner and, you know, it, it needs to be.
Will do.
Something.
Done, right.
Yeah, the more idea is to have that is to keep the kids, not to go on the roads to, maybe that adds like safety concerns or whatever, right?
I mean, if we're, if we're all being real with ourselves, they're probably sitting in their room playing iPads, but.
We, we will work with city staffs.
They're doing Oculus and they're virtual somewhere else, but, you know, I still would like to see something, because there are, you know, it's good to get a hoop or.
Commissioner Brass, I would like to address the, you know, obviously you have your viewpoint on the, on the setback side of things. You know, from our seat, from the commission's seat, ours is to be able to take what's being presented and apply it to what the rules are. And the rules are the ordinance. So, and the part that you, the part that you've missed before is the gallery apartments to the south have touted that they don't have a, you know, they're, they're not infringing on the setback. They've, they've been able to design their building, quite large as it is, but still be able to meet the setbacks required on the size of they are. So now, on the other side of the tracks, we have a design that infringes on the setback based on the size they are. So it, it gets back to the consistency side of things. Yeah, we, what's a reasonable variance? And more than fifty percent of what's expected is probably not a reasonable variance. If they're coming and saying they're in the upper thirties and they couldn't, you know, they're asking for a five-foot variance, I don't think you're gonna get much pushback from anybody if it's a very small variance. But they're asking for over a fifty percent variance from what's expected from the size of their building. To me, that's the biggest concern there. Yeah, we can get variances, and if it's reasonable. But what they've done and what they've gone through the steps on, they haven't done anything to try to at least meet the variance. And my fear is if we say yes to the variance, then that gives, that gives them, because now we've given them twenty-three feet, twenty-two feet, to be able to go find some open space to be able to meet the other requirement. So we're, we're, and this is the whole point of, you know, we'll do one and then we'll do the next one next month, because they are combined together. There are constraints for developers to be able to develop, to build within the confines of their property something that's adequate to them. They could easily meet the setback requirement by simply adjusting the size of their building by five percent. Six units, five percent of their building, it actually reduces their building costs as well, too. And they meet the variance. So why would we, it gets back to, why would we extra variance if they can actually make a minor adjustment to their plan and meet the requirements of that property, which has been there since the beginning? The wetlands have been there from the beginning. They're still able to build a hundred and eleven, hundred and thirteen unit apartment. It's not drastically changing anything for them, but meeting the requirements that we have in the city. And if we keep on giving variances, there's still a property to the, to the north up by, up at the corner of Pioneer and Clover Ridge Drive. Well, we just gave a variance twenty feet here, what are they gonna do up there in the corner? So what precedent are we setting for this for the next one to come as well, too? So that's, that's where I stand, is that why would we give a variance knowing that there's still more development to go on, especially here or even anywhere in Chaska? Just to say, eh, the ordinance doesn't really mean anything, we're gonna just say, you can, you can, we'll give you, we'll give you a variance by half just because. I find that hard to stomach, knowing that they haven't done anything to change the size of their building over the concept, preliminary, and now the final, to try to accommodate that.
I guess I would, my, my opinion on this is, first of all, we have no clue about the finances of the project. It's not our job.
Right.
So to say it's a minimal, you know, this is minimal and this is, you know, that's minimal, that's, that's just our opinions.
Well, five percent, but, but, but six units on a hundred and, a hundred and seventeen total is five percent, so.
And that may be, that may be, we don't know, I don't know, but you don't know either, that may be the profit margin in the project. We don't know, right?
Maybe so.
So, and that's, so anyway, I, that's, I'm assuming one of the reasons they're going this route and hoping that they get a variance.
But economics isn't a justification for a variance, because they're still able to build a sizable.
Yeah, I'm trying to take the economics out of my head and just, and, and I think your argument is fairly strong. And so it's a good point of to like, you know, it's a decision that commission needs to make, the variance or not the variance. I just try to take the economics out of it, because I don't want to be considering like, oh, well, this is how they make money. Sure, everyone's capital is excited, that's fine, that's fine. I just, I'm just trying to think, okay, the variance is arbitrarily based upon height. And it's like, because of the height, they need to have an extra twenty feet. And it's like, that's like for me to you. And it's like, if that, does that magically make it better if it was that? I, to me, I just feel like it's, I don't know if it does, you know, like, I just, I feel like, that's why variances exist, is because they, you know, the ordinance is, but at the same time, what you're saying is true, too, they could just make the building, they could have all along. Maybe they have to go back to the property owner and get a different price, and there's all these different things, and so they had two paths to take. And unfortunately, we're at the point where this is, we, so it's, it's an interesting one for sure.
And, and we've given variances, I mean, the other one that is, is the other prime example is the industrial parks, where it's the two-story, even though it's not really two-story, so they have to have so many caliper inches because of, you know. So we've given variances on that because it doesn't necessarily fit the intent of the ordinance, but not necessarily given them full fifty percent, you know, cutting things that drastically. But we've given them variances to be able to, you know, achieve the landscape side of things. You know, because of this, what it is it's going there, because it doesn't necessarily fit the intent, but, and that's how, how I was saying, it's like, well, yeah, if they were close, yeah, we can give a variance, because they're trying to make it work. But they're not, they're asking for over a fifty percent variance on a setback, not on landscaping. So that's the part where it's the, there, there's something more concrete, no pun intended, on the actual units being built versus trees that are trying to meet, you know, a, a code requirement as well, too.
Commissioner, if I can just put some color to some discussion, very good discussion you guys have had.
Will you please give us.
Yes, my, my name is Ashisha Goval, and I'm a resident of Plymouth, one six one three five, Fifty-Fifth Avenue North, Plymouth. And I'm one of the partners in this development. If we do, I would talk about the setback. So if we do push the building twenty feet, we lose eight units, you know, not six, eight units. Eight units is substantial financially to make this development work or not work. That's besides the point, maybe no one cares about financial, right? Just the aesthetics of the building. Now, think about it, now you have a U-shaped building, you push it twenty feet together. What does it do for the air, the sun, you know, the, the courtyard inside the building, right? It just narrows the whole building. So anyone who comes to the building and looks at it, it does not look like a design which is well thought out. So the building which is gonna be there for a hundred years, you know, standing there where people will be living, where families will be living, that, you know, now you have a constraint of air, sun, right, coming into the units. So you need enough courtyard and enough space inside that we have enough sun and air coming into the building and, and the design looks nice to Chaska, what a direction we got from both the Planning Commission and the City Council last time. So I just thought that this is something, you know, which is missing out in these discussions. Thank you.
Actually, can you hold on a second? So you made a statement that it's eight units, not six?
Correct.
So there's three floors of apartment, because the main floor is garage.
And Commissioner Olson, let.
So I can't see the math of how you get to eight.
And, and it could be more, because I, I am, I'm giving you the math, and when we push the building together, when we, what you are asking us, it could be twelve. So, and, you know, right now I don't have architects who can do the math and design it in a way you were asking us to do, right? It could be twelve, it could be fifteen.
So it's function.
All I'm saying is, if you, if you would let me, it, it's this, in, in a project like this, where people think, oh, it's a big project, it may be financially, you know, really the developers are making a lot of money. These projects are very, very tight, especially with the construction cost where they are. That losing even two units or five units can make or break the project.
Sorry, but we, we do have to, to brass, Commissioner Brass's points, like, we have to take the economics out of it, because you could have built two years ago, that land was.
Yeah, but.
But timing is everything, we know that.
Yes.
And now it's here, and we're final, I mean, we're, we're having a discussion on this, on the, on a final thing, a final item for a variance. So, and we're talking about size and setback, the setback specifically. And now you're, I mean, and the reason why the six apartments came from what would be giving up is by looking at the floor plan saying, well, if you didn't build this, you would lose that. And now you're saying, well, you changed the whole design. Well, that's not what we're asking, we're asking to meet the setback, and at minimum.
We will have to change the design to meet the setback, right? If you are saying we should meet the setback, and we went by what the direction we got from the City Council and Commission, like, the staff said there has been no changes, whatever direction we got from the, from, and again, Commissioner Olson, twelve acre site is a huge site. Any dweller, if this was not a wetland site, I think we could fit in five hundred units, six hundred units, right? And we only have hundred and nineteen units on a twelve acre site. So, you know, as much as you can go so much down into the weeds and start getting into this math, which we can do at this moment, a twelve acre state, hundred and nineteen units is a beautiful site. I think it's a beautiful site for Chaska to have just hundred and nineteen units. Anywhere else, I, I can bet you anything, you know, it could be six hundred units, seven hundred if we didn't have the wetland. So you have to understand there are constraints with the site. And we worked as much, we have worked, we've been working six months, you know, making sure that, hey, the, the building designs nicely, the building lays out nicely, it fits with the landscape. We provide amenities to the, to both our residents and also other people out there. That's all as a dweller we can do.
And also follow the ordinance that's, that's applied to the property.
We should probably vote soon, go ahead.
Yeah. Just my thoughts on this.
We're hammering.
Having studied it, driven out there, I know the road, I know the bend.
Yeah.
I know the property. To take, if this were to fall apart, that piece of property could sit there for a long time. And this is like a perfect fit for that property. And if there's somebody who hasn't been a part of this discussion, nobody's gonna know that we're not hitting the, the setback on that twenty feet at the end of the day here. And it, to your point, it also allows a hundred and nineteen more families to move into Chaska here, which is kind of a pretty nice thing that way. I do think we need to still figure out the tot lot thing, which we're working on.
And we can add that.
But when you, when you're trying to, you know, preserve wetlands and prefer, and, and work with everything that they're trying to work with here, you're shoehorning into a, a piece of land here. I, I don't think you could have done a better job on it.
Yeah, I, 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 I think we should vote if, unless the commission is okay with that. I, I, I feel like we should vote on the setback, add, final plat with a setback and add the condition to some sort of, I don't know if we have to call it a tot lot, but some sort of recreational area, right? Whether it's a basketball hoop or a swing.
Why don't you put that into a motion, Commissioner Brass?
Okay.
You can just keep it as a tot lot, because.
Okay.
Yes, it covers a wide.
You know what the intention is, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Let's, I don't have the, I'm only pulled up iPad like turned off here, so, okay. So here we go. So stroll down here. Okay, I will make a motion to recommend approval of the Clover Ridge apartment final site and building plan and final plat for a hundred and nineteen units subject to the following ten, ten conditions, with the additional condition developer will.
There'll be two additional conditions. But you, please state the first one.
First condition, first additional condition would be some sort of tot lot incorporated into the site. And then this second additional.
Second one is to obtain the variance.
I thought that was incorporated in this already.
Not yet. Not yet.
Okay, second condition was to obtain the variance.
The open space.
To obtain the setback variance.
No, the open space.
The open space.
The setback variance is a separate vote.
See, that's what. Yeah, okay, gotcha. To open space variance.
I'll second.
So just to be, so just to be clear now, we're all voting for approving the setback. So approving the setback variance.
Correct.
For one, but then also approving the conditions of a totlot and the variance for, how does that work when you're?
Well, we have to do.
So one motion, just to clarify, one motion is for the final site and building plan and final plat with the added conditions. The second motion would be on the variance piece.
It's just the one variance.
Correct.
Right.
Second raise coming back next month.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
There's two motions.
Yeah, a word. Let's, yeah.
Because it's.
One at a time.
Right. The final plat with as it is, with the two variances.
Well, it's two conditions, correct.
Two conditions.
The totlot and the upcoming variance.
Like I said, just trying to be clear on what it is that we're voting for and how we should be voting.
Check. All right, do we, everyone understands? Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign?
Nay.
One nay. Motion carries. Now we would entertain a motion to recommend approval of the variance, the setback variance.
I'll make a motion to approve the setback variance.
And second?
Second.
Commissioner Gorey seconds. Any discussion there?
Discussion. So with approving the setback variance and knowing that they have to come back through for open space and based on the calculation and math that they've provided, that staff has provided, that they're lacking 33,000 square feet. By approving this variance, you're allowing them to now create space to be able to meet another requirement that they have. And I don't believe that that is correct, proper, or in just with what we're trying to do. It's the, we're providing them the opportunity to find space on their land by obviously moving it forward. But that's on the condition that they don't change the actual size of their building. Because right now, they're constrained. They're 33,000 square feet short of open space. The only way you can create open space is by reducing the size of the building. So why not actually not give the variance for the setback and force them to stay within the, stay within the ordinance of the property as well as the expectations for the open space that, you know, is going to come back through on the next round? There's no reason why we have to give this approval today for the setback. We can deny it and then it can come back through because it's going to be, have to be addressed in the next version anyway by changing the size of their building to meet the conditions of their open space. So I, I'm, I'm all for that, but we do need to look at that one as well, too. Because if we approve it, we are giving them extra land because we've now given them a variance to the setback to be able to change the size of their building and still stay close to the city, to the street to find the space.
The 20 feet?
The 20 feet, yeah. So, because if we allow them to do that, now they're, they have to find 33,000 square feet somewhere within that property, which doesn't, it's right now.
I think that's going to come back, but that's, they're not going to find it. I mean, that's, that's the reason for the variance that they're going to come back for. So I don't, I, we just motioned and seconded.
Yeah.
So we should, we need to vote on it and I don't want to have a comeback and go through this for an hour again, the setback. So I would like to vote.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Want to oppose? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for your input. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. All right, 7C, public hearing to recommend approval of the conditional use permit, CUP, for 415 Walnut Street North, Chaska Moravian Church, PC number 2022-33. Liz, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just give me a second. I wasn't prepared. All right, thank you, members of the Planning Commission. The last and final item for the evening is for a conditional use permit request for the His House Foundation, specifically at the address of 415 Walnut Street North in downtown Chaska. So in terms of a background of this site and who's proposing it, Chaska Moravian Church is the applicant of this request this evening. They currently own the property at 415 Walnut Street North in downtown Chaska. It currently abuts on the northern side of their church, so they have owned that for several years. It's primarily been used as a single-family home that's been rented out over the years. Up until November of 2021, it has been occupied. Now they're looking at other ways that they can utilize that space. The church does currently hold within their basement area organizations that come in and use that space, one of them being the His House Foundation. And this foundation primarily serves clients within the area who are navigating housing needs and crisis within their family or individually. So the, this foundation provides services to those people who are in need and looking for housing. What they're specifically requesting to use this space for is for private meeting area. So they do some of that service in the basement of the church. They don't have that private meeting space that the home would be able to provide. So they're looking to convert that home and operate out of both of those locations. And the home itself is historically designated. It is a Chaska brick home. It's also located within the Walnut Street Historic District, so it has local and national designation on it. Another item of relativity is with the Highway 41 project that's currently kind of going through our process right now. It is looking at ways to provide public parking within downtown. One of the areas that is being looked at is behind this home in the rear portion of this lot for a portion of the block that the Moravian Church and some of these residents sit on. So there is a, a plan for the rear area to convert to public parking. So that is in the process as we speak. So when we talk about 415 Walnut Street, it's the property here highlighted in blue. Again, Chaska Moravian Church is just immediately south of that. It's directly located off of Walnut Street North, so the front of that building fronts on Walnut Street. And then you have an additional residential property to the north there as well. So again, they're requesting a conditional use permit for this address to be able to operate a professional office in a residential structure within the R2 zoning district. So the zoning district that's set up out there does permit professional services and offices such as insurance and real estate offices, attorney's offices and counseling services within existing residential structures that are primarily located on Pine Street and Walnut Street. So as you start to kind of get into the center of the city, there are those edges that have residential along them. So there is a provision within the R2 that, kind of those edge homes that are kind of in that commercial area can be used for professional office space with the acquisition of a conditional use permit. So that's what they're requesting this evening, is a CUP for that purpose so that they can be able to provide the organization, His House Foundation, to operate out of that residence. So there are a, a list of requirements for a CUP to be granted. I'm just going to go over a couple of those, but most of those are highlighted in the staff report. The first one with standard A, the establishment, maintenance or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort or general welfare. So the organization currently operates out of the Moravian Church, so that's just a property away from where they're located or where they're requesting to absorb into. So the request to allow that foundation to go into the home immediately adjacent would be the same as what's currently operating in that vicinity today. Standard B, the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. So the foundation and how they operate, from our understanding, is a very low intense use. They plan to have office hours from Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They get, they mainly operate client by client, so they don't have a big rush of clients coming in at one given time. So they say, state that they have five clients within a given week, which five staff members will be able to assist those clients that come in. So again, it's very spread out over the week in those office hours through the week. So it's not kind of your more intense office type user. They will also have their board meetings there as they'll have additional space to be able to work with. And that would be up to 10 people at any given time. And then with the people that they're serving within this type of operation is, they state that they, clientele rarely arrive in cars. They do walk to the site to get those services from the foundation. And then as it relates to standard D in terms of adequate facilities being in place, primarily with parking and utilities and that, and the like, all the operations of the proposal will be indoors. With the parking side of things, again, with the low intense user of this foundation, there isn't a huge need for parking on-site. And with the Highway 41 plans happening and the rear of property will be converted to public parking, there will be adequate public parking in the rear as well as parking in front of the, the home on-street. And again, due to the low intensity, there is not a huge parking demand that's proposed as part of this. So with that and meeting the standards that are laid out by the CUP, we are asking to make a motion to recommend approval of the CUP to allow professional services and offices type use at 415 Walnut Street North. And then subject to the conditions that are listed in the staff report. I believe we have representatives from the His House Foundation. If you have questions for them, otherwise I'm happy to help answer questions as well.
Any questions from staff before we open up the public hearing?
I, I have more of a comment. Is that right? I don't know if there's like a legal order on how these things appear on the action items, you know, to go through these for the evening. But I would just feel like, you know, for like our residents in the city, for something more trivial like this, that's probably going to be a little quicker. If we could do this at the beginning of the meeting, unless there's like a way that comes in the city, you have to do like this one first, that one first. Just, just more of a comment for like.
Yeah, and we can, we can certainly consider that. I think in the past, if we know there's, there's going to be a draw for a public hearing, we try to put those at the top versus.
Yeah, I just feel like, I just kind of feel, feel bad.
But I, I get the comment. It's valid.
For conditional use for like outreach.
Civic, should have been your last one.
Yeah. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
It's not one pocket.
But I get the point, you know, also the, get the largest group of people in and out first.
Well, it's good, I get the, yeah, that too, but like, you know, existing resident, like, you know, in the city, it's just a CUP. These things are pretty straightforward. Just feel like it'd be justice to our residents to get these on the docket first, but that's, I have no further questions.
Yeah, we can, we can consider that.
Okay. Then I want to open the public hearing at 9:20. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:20:30. And bring it back to, to the commission. I'll just comment quickly. I've, through, through my role on the Chaska Lions, I've worked with, with His House. They have a, I guess for lack of better, lack of a better explanation, they have a store in the basement of the church that, that serves a very needy, or needy, a very in need, you know, part of our community. I believe they do fantastic work. The, the Lions contributes a lot to this group because we're, we think so highly of what they do for the community. To me, it's a no-brainer. So that is, I guess is my bottom line.
It's a great service and being able to utilize the, you know, the recent vacancy on the house as well, too, is, you know, a great way of use as well, too. So, you know.
Good point. That's, that's true, so. That being said, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council approval of the conditional use permit for professional services offices used on the 415 Walnut Street North property, subject to the following three conditions.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thank you and thanks for.
Your patience.
Thanks for sitting with us for a while.
I've heard a lot.
There you go. So.
We might have an opening next year.
Yeah. Actually, we will.
I'll be in the house.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, other business. Let's receive in the minutes from the April 18th, 2022 City Council meeting and the April 4th, 2022 EDA minutes. And receive in the March 8th, 2022 Park Board meeting minutes. That being read in, I added one more item to the agenda and that is, everyone's seen my email. If you didn't know, we built a new house out of, outside of Chaska and, on, on our lake home lot. And so we're moving there and one of the criteria is you have to be a Chaska resident. So I'm going to be leaving the council or the commission six months earlier than my nine-year commitment or total commitment before I got kicked off. Anyway, so, so with that being said, first of all, I, you guys have read or can read the email anytime. And that, that email was addressed to Nate and Liz primarily as a, you know, as a letter of resignation. So what I want to say here while we're on the air is I really enjoyed the challenge of the last eight and a half years and the last maybe four years as the chair, I'm guessing. I don't even know that for sure, but I really wanted, so there's a few things I want to thank you. I want to thank you guys. This, in my opinion, out of all the years that I've been on the Planning Commission, this is probably the most knowledgeable and talented group that we've had. Yeah, I mean, they've all been good groups, but there's a lot of knowledge, you know, between Todd's knowledge and, well, all your guys' knowledge and Rob's knowledge on, on, you know, specific, specifically what we deal with. The knowledge base is very high and you guys do a, the, obviously, the, the banter and the, and the comments are, are excellent every meeting. Last, last month till 1:30 in the morning, including the storm, but, you know. And so anyway, I wanted to thank you guys.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that. And I wanted to, I did kind of, I, I want to thank the, the past commission members that I've worked. And I wanted to, I did kind of, I want to thank the past commission members I've worked with. I want to thank, specifically, I want to thank Mike, Mike Hong, who went up to the City Council, and that's how I became the chair. Mike was the chair before me, and he's now, he's now in the City Council. Besides Nate and Liz, and my email is pretty clear on what I think of their skill level and their help to me throughout this process. I want to thank, you know, Kevin Wright, who's done a lot of work to, during COVID, he had to pull a rabbit out of the hat a lot of times and continues to do so. I want to also specifically thank Kevin Ringwald for all the years that I worked with him. He's, he was invaluable over the years. And then frankly, just anybody else in the staff that I know, I can't mention everyone, even, you know, I mean, I've talked to the mayor over the years on different things, and he's given me advice on how, you know, how to go on certain way, or how to at least approach certain topics. And so anyway, I want to thank, I want to thank everyone.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'd like to thank, yeah, my family, friends, no. So anyway, after this, now we have a little bit of housekeeping logistics that I want to get the ball rolling on. In the city ordinance, it is, it states that the vice chair, if the chair has to leave the commission, the vice chair would become the chair. And I would like the Planning Commission to make that recommendation to the City Council. And then also, I would like to recommend Carl Lacy, who's not here tonight, because of his years of experience on the board, to assume the role of vice chair. And because of, he's going through some health issues right now. That's why he's not here tonight, but he did call me today, and he called the staff today. And he's, and he is willing to step up in the vice chair role. And I already talked with Rob, and he's willing to step up as the chair following the ordinance. So do we need a, should we have a motion for that, Liz?
I think technically, yes. You do need to make a motion.
All right. Let's make a motion, and I guess since I'm still the chair till the end of the meeting, someone else can make that motion.
Can we put a condition on that motion so that when vice chair gets to be chair, we don't have a six-hour meeting? Sorry, sorry.
I hope he's watching.
Rob has the Guinness Book of World Records on the chart of meetings.
We've got the twins of the spectrum here, so...
One of the shortest.
I'll make the motion to recommend the, I'll say appointment of Commissioner Brass to chair and Commissioner Lacy to vice chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Bansky, any other discussion?
I feel we're bored on myself, but let's do it.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. All right, a quick roundtable like we do every meeting. Anybody, Commissioner Olson, you can start since you're on that end. You got any other comments you'd like to make, or nope? Graduation time, so bring someone along. Good deal. Commissioner?
Thank you. Even though it's just a short time, I learned a lot from you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Like how you handle and all those things. Thanks for serving Chaska, I know. Have a happy and great new home. Enjoy your new home.
Appreciate that. And though I'll be, we're only an hour away, and I definitely won't be, we still both work here, we have a son that lives in town yet, so if we have to come to town for something, we got a place to crash, so. Which is a, which is a good thing.
You just opened up every fourth Wednesday.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's one way to look at it. I would have loved to have finished it off and say, well, I can't do anymore, but that's, that's just the way it worked out, so, thank you. Commissioner Bansky?
I've got three things, actually. First off, I wanted to thank you for your time and your dedication to the city of Chaska and everything that you've done.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, quick update on the Chaska Community Center. I'm sitting on that task force right now. We met last month. We had, we're kind of doing a SWOT analysis right now. So we're in-depth with that. Next Wednesday, the fifteenth, from six o'clock to eight o'clock, we're having an open house at the Chaska Community Center with ice cream. And so it's really just to try and get feedback from the community of what they want to see in the future. There have been a lot of, you know, fitness trends and activity trends over the years. Some were very popular thirty years ago when the building was built. Not so popular today, so we want to make sure that we're setting it up for the next thirty years. And then this is more a question for Liz. Liz, in a previous life on a different council, when we're talking about this apartment project and the landscaping, we're trying to get all this landscaping kind of pushed into this one property, we created a program where we kind of had a bank so we could take some of the trees, instead of trying to overcrow them where they're gonna die out, you could take those trees, put them on credit-type thing, and then use them in other parts of the community, hopefully the same neighborhood so it kind of affects that neighborhood.
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, it is.
But if we could do something like that versus, you know, putting in four trees within four feet of each other, we know three of them gotta have to get cut down in five years-type thing.
Love that idea.
I would challenge, I would challenge you to make sure that that is on paper in the city and being considered.
If that's possible. And that could go along with the top lot also.
You know, there'd be a fund. They put the money in, so the money's there. Then it can be, those trees can be put somewhere else.
Yeah, I think there's ways to think about that in terms of how that works. Other communities have done it. I think, yeah, it'll take a little bit of research, I think, on our end to figure out if that's something that, you know, we want to implement into our code. That might be probably a work session, a good work session piece, maybe wrapped into other things, kind of things that we want to work on in the future. But I do appreciate that comment and just, maybe it's a way for us to move forward on some of these pieces that we're dealing with on-site plans.
Yeah, it just bugs me to see, you know, some of these developments you go through, and they've got trees right next to each other, and you know that. In ten or fifteen years, you're gonna have to cut some of those trees out of there or they're gonna kill themselves that way. That's all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, anything?
I took the advice from Nate or whoever it was that sent the email out about, and did the tours of the city buildings. There's a definite need. It's not just a want.
Did you see my cue?
So...
It's an eye-opener.
Seeing a computer server next to a toaster oven, yeah, they need space.
Have you looked at the carpet in this building?
Hey, that was my thing.
It's historic.
I brought that up like years ago. I'm like, look at this carpet.
Dead it?
That's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Gorey?
And it's, thank you for your service and enjoy, enjoy the new chapter.
Appreciate that, and I, yeah, we will. Commissioner Brass?
Yes, thank you.
Soon-to-be-chair Brass?
Thank you for your service. Obviously, it's, I took the responsibility and duty to be chair, commissioner, chairperson if this happened. It would be an honor to fulfill that role. And then also, I just wanted to point out the, I think it's, like tonight with the apartment complex where Commissioner Olson has his opinion, I have mine. People are in the middle. I don't know what else is thinking. I think it's healthy. I don't want people, hopefully, don't want to walk away from this meeting thinking, oh, that was a big fight tonight, and, you know, it's adversarial, we don't, you know, whatever. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's the opposite. I think it's healthy that there should be disagreements, and opinions should be voiced. And if you don't agree, you vote against it, and then you walk away, and in the next meeting, you're fine. I think that's a healthy discussion point for...
I think you brought up a good point.
For the commission. So I just don't want to have people walk away from this thinking, oh, that was a little bit awkward tonight, or hard, or whatever, because I think that's exactly what you need to see on the commission because it shows that everyone's thinking and has their viewpoint, so.
You're gonna be a good chair or something.
Yeah, it was good conversation, and, yeah, we've had, we've had more combustible conversations than that before.
Yeah.
And that's the beauty part, being able to voice it and be able to put it there. We do our job, and then City Council does that.
Without those conversations, there would be no need for us.
Right. I think it's important that people in the future, whether it's someone's a little more quieter on the, like, feel free to come forward and say your piece, you know, like Commissioner Olson does, like that, that was, that's what you need.
And I think our newer commissioners, as you learn more and get more experienced, you'll get more opinions on the different projects. And, yeah, it's, would be your responsibility to get it out.
To challenge. So again, it'll be an honor.
I appreciate it. We'll keep you straight.
Yeah, you'll do a great job.
I'm sure I'll mess up the first few meetings, but we'll get it.
All right, and my last act is I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No, I think we just leave it open.
Are we gonna table that? Can't leave until it's... I'm sorry, Nate, did you have anything before we're done?
Just one thing that I deserved to be forgotten because I'm not there.
I'm sorry about that. I forgot to ask Liz if she had anything too, so. So she gets to go after you.
Just one housekeeping item that kind of ties into Commissioner Dahlke, his resignation tonight. What will happen with the alternates, there's a little bit of movement there. So right now, Commissioner Baswa and Commissioner Austin for both alternates. Commissioner Baswa is appointed as alternate number one, and Commissioner Austin is alternate number two. How that works is that Commissioner Baswa would slide up into, I guess, we'll call it, I don't know, I'm lacking a better term here, a regular commissioner position. Austin slides into number one, which then you're next in line, you know, if another seat becomes vacant at some point. And then we will have a vacancy for a alternate number two position that will work on getting filled. So that's something that council manages. But, you know, I just put it out there, if you feel that there's people out there that you would maybe think could fit well on the commission, you know, it's always, it's always good to try and recruit, get good people in front of the council that have good, well, ideally a tough decision to make when that time comes. So just wanted to throw that out there. And the other thing, I just gotta pull my notes here. I sent an email to you all. I hope you received it for July eighteen. Our intention is to have a joint work session in the City Council. One of the main topics that has been, I think, percolating recently, and I know there's history to it as well, but making sure that our public involvement process is sound and taking a look at that. And so we've been doing some research on the staff side to figure out what other comparable communities are doing, learn from their best practices. And I think the intention at that joint work session will be to share what we're learning with you all and the City Council and work towards, you know, what everyone feels would be the right thing in Chaska and make some changes there. Hopefully, you know, improve our ability to reach neighbors and residents and impact businesses and things as products are coming forward and really have a healthy, you know, conversation around that moving forward, at least improve it. So that's the importance, that's the intention with that, and I hope you'll attend. If you aren't able to attend, you know, certainly understand that's okay. If there's a remote option that we hope of that, let me know, and we can try to line it up to make that available.
Do you want us to reply to this email? Or are you gonna send out an invite, or how would you like to handle that?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Would you like us to reply to your email? Are you gonna send out an Outlook invite, or how would you like to handle the attendance?
Yeah, if, just send an email. If you're unable to attend, just let me know.
Okay.
My exception.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Other than that, I would just, yeah, extend my thanks and gratitude to Commissioner Dahlke for your dedication in the city and all the work that you've done as chair of the Planning Commission and on the Planning Commission before you were chair. So I can say my responsible position is no pleasure working with you. And, you know, I've certainly learned a lot too, talking to you and how you think about issues in our regular meetings ahead of this. So Commissioner Brass, that'll be something that we can talk about too, is how do you want to communicate ahead of meetings. And certainly, all of you, you know, always have to communicate ahead of meetings, but do try to make a point with the chair to do that. That's all we got. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Nate. Appreciate it. Liz, I'm sorry, I forgot about you before I called for adjournment.
I, I...
The most important person in the room.
I would like to extend that same notion back to you. Again, thank you for your service with the Planning Commission. I think you've done a great job at being able to manage these meetings because they can be tough sometimes, and I think you've done a great job of that. And I think a lot of us can look up to you for kind of the role model that you've been able to create here within the Planning Commission. So I just want to extend my gratitude and thank you for your time and your service on this commission.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, now I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We are adjourned.